Can we have a roll call?
Diner.
Here.
Braun.
Here.
David.
Here.
Drogen.
Here.
Haberther.
Here.
Jankowicz.
Here.
Ladati.
Here.
Panici.
Here.
Zimmerman.
Here.
We have Quorum.
Okay, our first item is receiving of the minutes of the secretary from our February 10th meeting.
Motion to accept the minutes.
Very good. Do I have a second? All right, that was by Mr. Jankowicz. So, a motion made by Mrs. Zimmerman, second by Mr. Jankowicz. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Reading and acceptance of monthly correspondence. Mr. Gano.
We have several items this month. We have three proclamations passed by the mayor and council at their January council meeting. We have a proclamation regarding the Youth Art Month for 2020, School Board Recognition Month, and the 100th Anniversary of Women's Suffrage. That's public correspondence.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone have any comments, questions on correspondence? If not, can I have a motion to accept? Can I have a motion? I have a motion made by Dr. Panici, second by Mrs. Drogen. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Next item, superintendents' report and presentations.
Sure.
So, before we honor the Student of the Month, I'd like to just share, as part of my update, a letter that went out to the community today regarding health and wellness, and I feel it's important to share in this public forum, too. So, regarding the coronavirus, I've been actively monitoring the guidance provided by the CDC, as well as the NJ Department of Education and New Jersey Department of Health. Additionally, I've been in communication with our county executive superintendent and my superintendent counterparts across Union County. These conversations have been productive and critical in our district's efforts to engage in thoughtful planning. I was especially glad to connect with Kennelworth's health officer, who reviewed and approved of our district's precautionary measures, as well as my correspondence and updates. Here are some important notes, procedures, and reminders going forward. Regarding much-publicized, thanks to NJ.com, school closings. The Department of Ed published a notice with guidance regarding requirements for public health-related school closures. The NJ DOE will count home instruction-like activities, including direct services, online instruction, or any other means developed by the district to meet the needs of its students, as part of the required 180 days of school. However, we should note that this allowance of home instruction, which may include distance-based or online learning, only counts towards the 180 days if we are directed by a public health agency to close schools, and not when we self-elect to close schools for preparatory measures. Related to this concern are some points of interest. So, this Thursday, a group of administrators, teachers, union leadership will be meeting, along with our school physician and some health officers from the county and borough, to make specific plans for distance learning and to form what the state is calling a "school preparedness plan." In order for us to consider the potential for virtual learning, a survey went out to assess families' access to technology and the internet. We have a couple hundred respondents already. We'll be reissuing that survey to make sure we get as many participants as possible. Our teachers will be using our upcoming March 18th PD Day to help collaborate on plans in the event of a school closing. Just a reminder, we continue to sanitize and clean our facilities by following standards for enhanced cleaning and disinfecting using EPA-registered products proven to kill both seasonal viruses and the coronavirus. In the event a child is returning to school after having traveled to an area of the world within the past two weeks that has been highly impacted by the coronavirus, we have certain protocols in place, and so we're working with the nurse to identify those, as well as with our school physician. And we cannot, as you might imagine, share confidential student information, and so we're not doing that. Keep in mind, though, a couple of final points. Unless otherwise directed by the DOE and Department of Health and the NJ SIAA, in the event of a state-mandated closing, all athletic events and extracurricular activities, including field trips, will be canceled. In the circumstances around, the virus requires us to wait, or at least I think it's in our best interest to wait, to send definitive word about the use of our give-back days as a result of unused snow days. So, we're still very much in the midst of planning for what distance-based learning will look like. So hopefully, that will be part of the efforts on Thursday. There are a lot of unanswered questions. I think most districts are faced with them, so we'll have to collaborate to figure them out. We're still waiting for a template from the DOE that should guide and govern that work. The latest guidance that came out today, just a couple hours ago, three things are critical to the plan that the state will be reviewing. They are ensuring that all kids have equitable access to the assignments in distance-based learning, that special ed needs are addressed, and what that looks like from home will be a challenge, but something we'll have to figure out. And then, we are still responsible for serving students who are on free and reduced lunch. So, we'll be looking to find protocols to make that happen as well. It's a little bit like flying the plane while you're building it. Is that how that expression goes?
Yeah.
Hopefully, a sense of teamwork and collaboration will prevail.
Thank you.
To introduce our March Student of the Month, I'd please introduce Mrs. Trabara.
Good evening. So, I have the pleasure tonight of introducing to you Malagros Kepcha. She had originally applied for the Prudential Spirit of Community Awards, and while she did not receive that particular scholarship, they believed that her volunteer hours and all the work that she had completed qualified her for the President's Volunteer Service Award. And so, we are really honored tonight to present to her that. And I'd like to read to you from her guidance counselor, Mr. Lugo, his letter of recognition for all of the work that Malagros has engaged in. He says, "I've had the pleasure of getting to know Malagros Kepcha on both an academic and personal level. She is an honest, mature, and responsible young individual. She is hardworking and respectful towards staff and peers alike. While at David Burley High School, Malagros continues to challenge herself academically. As a result of continuously making high honor rolls, she was nominated to become a member of the NHS. She is always giving her best, an attribute admired by all. She has maintained, remained consistent with her academics, and continues to push herself to maintain as close to an A-point grade average as possible. She is very perceptive and always willing to take on new challenges. She enjoys interacting with others and always is willing to assist in any way possible." But it is above this and beyond that she is honored tonight. She has always been involved in extracurricular school activities, and for the last three years, she has volunteered at Trinitas Regional Medical Center. Malagros is responsible for stocking supply carts for use in the emergency room. She labels specimen tubes for laboratory use. She volunteers at the Community Food Bank of New Jersey, where she helps sort food that is shipped throughout the local area. And over the several months, Malagros enrolled in the Kennelworth and Scotch Plains Local Youth Police Academy. She's also volunteered with the Kennelworth Police Department's National Night Out, an event designed to increase crime and drug prevention awareness in the local community and strengthens neighborhood spirit and police-community partnerships. So, it's through these activities that Malagros further develops her leadership abilities, as well as her self-discipline. She's learned to set and work toward personal goals and ultimately achieve success. She's a team player who has the ability to motivate others around her, and we couldn't be more proud to present to her tonight the Spirit of, or the Volunteer Service Award from Prudential. Malagros?
I think we want to...
Yeah.
Well, he's got to be in the picture, too. Get the whole family in there. Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, what's up, Mexico?
You guys are free to go.
Free to go.
You want to get home? You're always welcome, too, but I'm sure you've got other things to get done.
Since we're passing, this is the SSDS for next. All right, so before you, you have the HIV packet for the month. The first page is the Harding's HIV results across the year. Do I have one more copy? I do. I could have miscounted.
Thank you.
You got it. HIV results across the year. The second page is Burley's Year at a Glance. For the month of February, there are seven cases. Six cases were founded, one was unfounded. Just as a reminder, this is a first reading of the results. You'll be voting on these results in April. The third and fourth page of the packet provide more granular-level information on Burley's February investigations. Later in the month, you'll be voting on last month's first-reading information. At Burley, for the month of January, there are three founded cases of HIV and one unfounded case. You'll be voting to affirm, deny, or modify these three cases as part of Resolution 25. And as a reminder, also kind of bundled into Resolution 25 is the finding for which we had a board-level hearing on February 26th. The curriculum committee heard that board-level hearing. Mrs. Zimmerman and her curriculum reports at a high level will report out on the recommendation of the committee. The last two pages in the packet reflect the suspension reports and the enrollment report for February. Are there questions?
Yes, so Kyle, I have a question.
Yeah.
Well, I'll see if any other board member has a question first. Anybody?
Yeah, just one moment.
Sorry.
Okay, what's your questions?
Anyone come up with a question yet? If not, I'll ask mine.
Good wait time, Mr. David.
Yeah, thanks. So, obviously, at Harding, things are pretty good from an HIV perspective. We've only had one reported case in the last eight months, and four consecutive months of zero. So, that's really good. But in looking at Burley, the trend since December is, you know, is going up. And in the actual number of cases for February, you know, three was in February, I mean, January was high, and now we doubled that in February. So, like, what are we doing to address that? I mean, obviously, it seems like the grammar school is going pretty well, but high school, not so much.
So, that's a big, big question, and loaded also. If I could answer that in the context of a review of the SSDS information, which is next, because I think it speaks to some real gaps we have around social-emotional learning that need to be addressed over time. I think that's some of what would be a satisfactory answer to that question.
Okay.
Just a quick question. The alternate education program for two of the heads.
Yeah.
That means they were placed out of school somewhere else permanently? What is...
No, that's like, oh, sorry, like in-school kind of suspension.
Okay.
Yeah.
For like a day, or did the usual...
I did. These cases were a day. I should also mention, in terms of this month's report, it's hard to tell on this chart, but several of them are interrelated. So, for example, two, two and three are cases that were kind of born out of each other, and so were cases six and seven, right? So, on the second page, the last two, or actually, a better example to illustrate my point is on the first page. In case two and three, in case two, accused, see if you could follow this bouncing ball, in case two, accused one is the same as, is the same person as target one in case three. Does that make sense? So, there's a couple matters like that where they're sort of yoked together.
Is it retaliatory, or is it...
Perhaps, yeah.
So, is part of what we're just doing a better job of recording this or identifying, Kyle, or...
I think that's a big question, too.
Okay, let's see what your report says.
So, let's look at the SSDS, because I think by looking at one, you learn more about the other, right?
Yeah.
So, the SSDS is called the Student Safety, what used to be the Electronic Vandalism and Violence Report, right? It's just been renamed. There are two public reporting periods, two look-back periods. So, right here, you're looking at period one from September to December of 2019. So, on this first page, across those areas, you'll see kind of a three-year history and how we performed, so to speak, in those areas that the SSDS captures. So, even though it's across three years, what you're measuring there in the bar graphs are, in fact, just period one, reporting periods. So, page two, just at a more granular level, unpacks for you what's meant by violence and what's meant by vandalism. But those numbers that are in that chart helped to build the graphs on the first page. And on the third page, you'll see an even deeper dive into some of that data. So, on page three, you'll see the results by building, right? So, how Burley fared versus Harding in each of those categories that the SSDS tracks. Okay. So, I think the last page is by far the most important page, right? Because it explains what type of programs and trainings we have in place for teachers and students. And so, the trainings include everything from, like, when teachers are required to go on to, we don't call it the GCN here, what do we call it? Safe Schools, at the beginning of the year to log their hours, right? But the trainings also capture whenever we send teachers out for professional development on topics of HIV. Here's the challenge here. None of that matters unless it affects or informs classroom culture, right, and building climate. So, when I look at all the programs for students, an area I see a need for are more, and I said this in the fall, more systematic approaches to SEL learning in grades seven through 12. So, in case six, there's a formal curriculum, and while it's still being implemented, and there are lots of kinks to work out with it, second step, right, it's like a programmatic approach to social-emotional learning. What I see when I reviewed all the programs in grade seven to 12, many of them are like one-and-dones. Does that make sense? So, a start-with-hello week is really great. It's based on the Sandy Hook Promise, but that's just like a week of focused on SEL. Where is the curricular programs, right? Where are, like, schools are trying things like Seven Habits of Highly Effective Teens by Covey, or the Leader in Me Program, or the Disney Leadership Institute. And until you have programs in place that really address climate and culture for kids, I think you're going to see, we're going to see those same numbers on the SSDS. So, that's something I'd like to look at and work on over time, right? Assemblies, I've learned, have kind of faded out of existence in the middle and high school, and that's something I'd like to look at. While I don't think assemblies are the panacea, they are certainly opportunities for kids to get together, to hear a common message, and that has worth and value. So, something to be looked at for next year, along with a more systematic approach, right? There also needs to be direct, and this will be my final kind of punctuation point on this, particularly in the middle grades. The appeals that are coming to me around HIV from parents or even kids are a lot of, we, I see some middle school teachers in the audience, so I'll speak to them, "We didn't mean to do this to him. We're friends with him," right? So, I think more direct learning for kids around the idea that the intent does not matter, the law does not care about intent, it cares about impact. So, just because you didn't intend to hurt his feelings, you did, right? And so, statutorily, if you're looking at that criteria, doesn't mean you're a bully. It means the act you engaged in, right, is an act of HIV. And so, that's a lot of what the conversation needs to bend towards moving forward. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I think I just spoke for too long. Answer your question.
No, that was fine.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Kyle on this?
Well, just on the total, I mean, total is just, I mean, it's 12 for the year, really, actual cases, right? So, that's two a month. I mean, that seems like a, I know one is too many, but that seems like a pretty low number for a middle school and high school combination.
Right. Well, again, I was looking at comparing to Harding, which, again, four consecutive months of not a single case, and we're spiking in, you know, Burley, and again, a double in one month. That's a pretty high total.
Yeah. So, I would argue, might we need to find the equilibrium between, and I'm not saying we are, but it's something to consider, over-identifying cases versus under-identifying cases, maybe. Something to look at moving forward.
Absolutely.
Right? Yeah.
Any other questions?
Just one last thing. When I look at the programs in grade seven and eight, the information that was shared to me, a counselor-driven puzzle project, student training on stop aid, counseling groups, Tree of Hope, the screening of the movie Tall Girl, week of respect and peer advisory activities, they're really focused on the middle grades, which is great, but that needs to happen across the grades, right?
Any other questions?
No, I just like this form a lot better than what we used to do.
Sure.
Do you still have items, Kyle, or you...
Can't possibly have any more items. Using all my, all my talking stick time.
Okay. All right. Kyle has nothing else, then we can move on to report of committees, review of resolutions, and board discussion. First up is finance and facilities. Mr. Ladati.
Okay, thank you. The committee has been working diligently on the 2020, 2021 budgets since January. In fact, they had a meeting prior to tonight, I mean, prior to this meeting tonight, to discuss some budgetary items. The state aid figures were released on February 27th, and we saw a small, small increase in several of the aid categories. The committee met earlier this evening and reviewed several options to reduce the budget to a reasonable level. There remain several challenges, and the committee is attempting to balance the need for funding to improve the overall level of instruction and student learning with the needs coupled with the needs of the taxpayers. The committee will formally be, formally be presenting the budget to the full board for consideration on March 16th special meeting. The board will adopt a tentative budget for submission to the county executive superintendent for technical review that evening. Again, that's not the final budget. That's just for the county executive review. The committee will also continue to hone the budget up until April 29th's public meeting. And the resolutions, we'll review to find them all in order, I mean, the financial resolutions all in order. I don't know if anybody has any questions on any of the other items on the resolutions. Number nine is the, is the app for communication. All leaders will get the app. It basically makes us compliant with Alyssa's Law, and hopefully, it will get us some additional grants. A ten is a solar project. It's basically this assessment to determine if we want to move forward with solar.
Good question on that. Sit there where they're going to, somebody's going to pay us all back. Is it something that is going to cost us or not cost us anything?
It will, it will not cost the district money.
Okay.
It's built in, it's built into the...
If you put out $9,000, we're going to get it.
Correct. Any money expended on the proposals will be, the solar companies have to build that within their proposal costs.
And we did go through this once several years ago. I think Nancy, of course, you're on the board.
Yeah, of course I was.
And we did go, and if we were working out, we spent, we had several meetings, and then it just turned out to be, it would not be cost-effective for the, for the district. I mean, we were even thinking about bringing the town in, then, and put maybe solar panels and do it all in connection and to have the town buildings also fitted with solar.
We thought about doing the things in the parking lot, but then there was concerns with the kids in the parking lot destroying them at night.
Hopefully, this will work out better for us. That's all I have, Mr. David.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Ladati? Any board members? Okay, seeing none. We will move on to personnel and management. Mr. Haberther.
Thank you. We have 13 resolutions now, both moving quickly. Resolution 11 is the acceptance of retirement of Secretary to Principal at Harding Elementary. Resolutions 12 and 13 approve a maternity leave. Resolutions in 14 and 15 are the approval for maternity leave replacement. Resolution 16 is the approval of paraprofessional and lunch aid for the 2019 former school year. Resolution 17 is professional approval for Burley's staff at Kennelworth.
I'm going to talk about that in a short session. Oh, forgive me, sorry.
That's right. Is approval of professional development presenters. Resolution 18 is the approval of staff for curriculum writing. Resolution 19 is the payment of unused vacation tickets for the Harding supervisor of building and grounds. Resolution 20 is the approval of home instruction. Resolution 21 is approval for the appointments for the 2019-20 school year. Resolution 22 is approval for education and career fair attendance. And the last one, Resolution 23, is the approval of substitute staff. Does anybody have any questions on these resolutions?
Yes, on 21, we had gotten a salary that this new person will be starting with. Are all of these included in that salary, are these stipends?
21?
They're all included.
Yeah, they're all included. Those are, those are just, they're not stipends, they're just responsibilities.
Any other questions for Mr. Haberther? Okay, we can move on to curriculum and instruction. Mrs. Zimmerman.
Okay. Tonight, short and sweet under curriculum and instruction, we have resolution 24, which is curriculum adoption/revision for several parts of curriculum, new revision for new, new curriculum for ethnic studies and revisions for the others. And resolution 25 is the HIV report. The only thing to add to that is, as Mr. Arlington alluded to, our committee did meet this past month to hear a parental grievance related to one of the HIV cases, and having, with counsel present, and having heard all of the information revealed at that, the committee's recommendation to the board was to uphold the administrative ruling on the matter as an HIV case.
Any questions for Mrs. Zimmerman? Okay, thank you. I don't see any resolutions under policy, but Ms. Braun, do you have anything?
No.
Okay. All right, then we can move on. All right, then we can move on to old business. Does anyone have anything for old business or under old business?
Quick question. Everything's completed with the gym? Nothing, no remaining items?
Still a couple, still a couple of punch list items. I'm sure I haven't closed it out yet, but they're, they're mine. We're having some paint chipping issues that we want to make sure it's getting done. The sound system was just finished up, I think, last week, so just minor stuff.
Mr. David, I have to just, Vince, can you give us an update or Kyle on the temporary classroom situation?
Yes. So as you know, about a month ago, we lost part of the roof during a windstorm. Currently, the insurance company is reviewing it, as well as an architect, the, an engineer, specifically who has a familiarity with prefab buildings. It's going to be a challenge to find the panels for that, and that's what they're currently attempting to do and come up with a plan to repair that roof.
It's always interesting that there have been temporary classrooms for 50 years.
I don't call them temporary.
I know, that's what they're...
They lasted a long time.
They lasted a long time.
I was going to say, the temporaries at the school that I'm at were there long before I was even born, I think, much less the fact that I had classes in them as a kid.
Well, thank you for the update, Vince.
Thank you.
Just, just, Tab, is TAB committee operating, not operating? Are we on hold? What's...
It's a good question, which I haven't really thought about, but I don't have any issues if we think...
No, the only thing, I think, the reason why we stopped it over the last, probably late year or so, Nancy, or two, is because of negotiations.
Well, we had stopped it, yeah, when things were a little contentious, but once that was finished, it was supposed to get back up and operating. And even though I know we're in negotiations now, the last time prior to things getting rocky, we were able to maintain the committee and utilize it within the parameters of what it's supposed to do without crossing those borders. So I was just wondering if we were looking to get it going again, or...
So I'm working with Ms. Smith. I do have this teacher names that she had given me, so were she and I are ready? I guess it's a board-level conversation.
And I could always stay, I've been on, I know, I don't know if Nancy could still be on it, but, I mean, because I, I could get here by 3:15 or so.
I'm not going to remember.
Yeah.
I don't know if Vince has it handy, but...
I do have it somewhere.
Yeah.
Well, that would depend on the timing and when we started it up. Again, I'm on second shift this year, so I actually work till 3:30.
Yourself, Mr. David.
Last time it was, it was on first shift.
Mr. Jankowicz, Mr. Ladati, and Mr. Haber.
Okay. All right, I mean, again, I'm perfectly willing to have a meeting.
I think it's any two, it's any two.
Okay.
I think the issue is time.
Yeah.
When, you know, usually the meetings have been after school, so...
To try to accommodate the teachers.
Yeah, I mean, the only way that I would be able to attend is after school.
Well, I'm just saying, that conflict of who could, who could get here, who can't get here, so...
Yeah. All right, so we have to work out logistics then, but again, I don't have any issue with starting it up if we think it's worthwhile.
I just, I know when we were operating before, I felt it was, I don't know if the teachers did as well, but we, we were able to get through some minor issues in a, in a much more amicable way and, and deal with them instead of them blowing up into bigger things. So I, you know, if that can be done, it's always worth doing.
Right. I'm good with it, so I guess Kyle will try to work out scheduling something that's conducive to everyone's schedule. Okay, thank you for that. Anything else under old business? Okay, new business. Anyone have anything for new business? Okay, then...
Motion open to the public.
Thank you so much. Do I have a second? Have a motion made by Mrs. Zimmerman, second by Mr. Haber, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry, the meeting is open to the public for comment. The Board of Education sets the limit for the public to speak at the board meeting to five minutes per person unless prior permission has been granted by the board for extended time. Is there anyone in the public who would like to say anything on the public record? Step forward and state your name and address. Okay, nobody's running. All right, have a motion to close.
Anybody going once, going twice? I see everyone looking around.
I have a motion by Mr. Haber, have a second by Mr. Ladati, all in favor? Opposed? So carry, the public portion of the meeting is closed, and so we will move on to roll call of resolutions.
Okay, this is for all the resolutions on the agenda, which is 1 through 25. Are there any that need to be voted on separately?
I'll save them 25 separately.
Okay, I'll vote on, we'll vote on number 25 separately. Okay, so this is 1 through 25, or actually, 1 through 24. Biner?
Yes.
Braun?
Yes.
Drogon?
Yes.
Haber?
Yes.
Jankowicz?
Yes.
Ladati?
Yes.
Panici?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Motions carry unanimously. This is for resolution number 25 on the agenda. Biner?
Yes.
Braun?
Yes.
Drogon?
Yes.
Haber?
Yes.
Jankowicz?
Yes.
Ladati?
Yes.
Panici?
Stan.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we have a need to go into executive session.
Yes, we do.
Mr. Ginnell.
Be resolved, Board of Education, meet in private session, from which the public shall be excluded, assess the topics of KEA negotiations, personnel, specifically administrative team focuses, an attorney-client privilege regarding the send and winfield send-receive, which private discussion is being held pursuant to Section 7B of the Open Public Meetings Act. Matters under discussion will be disclosed to the public as soon as final decisions are made and voted upon.
Okay, so you need a motion. Do you have a motion?
Some of...
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Zimmerman, second by Dr. Panici, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry, the board is in closed session. Okay, we're back on the public record. No action was taken in closed session, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I have a motion made by Mrs. Zimmerman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Haber, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry, the meeting's adjourned. Thank you.
Next Monday.